All right. Good morning, folks. Good to see you. It's bright and early. You know, it's actually, I think, an hour earlier than it's supposed to be, but, you know, they play with our clocks. And we were worrying about clocks last night. And, you know, it's one of those things, you know, you wake up every hour on the hour making sure that you did got the clocks right for getting up. But you all figured it out, so we're glad you're here. So if I could invite Pastor Katie up here. We'll open with a prayer this morning, and then we'll get on to some of the business here that I know you're anxious to hear.
Let's pray. Oh, yeah, you have chosen the church to be your vessel, your tool for ministry on this earth. God, we are in for the church, and we are finding a way forward. We don't entirely know what that looks like yet, God, but we know that you are in it and that you are guiding us and that you are with us. We ask that you calm our anxiety in the sun and that you remind us that you have not left us or forsaken us, and you will take us forward. In your name we pray. Amen.
I think for just a little bit of background, to kind of talk a little bit about how this church is organized. We all knew that there was a general conference. We all know there's an annual conference. We know there's bishops out there. But a little bit about how the church organizes and then why we make decisions the way we do. It might make a little bit of sense to kind of understand it, to take some of the mystery out of it. So go back to your high school, American government, and think about how the church is organized along the same way. Now, John Wesley created the Methodist movement in England, but it really exploded when Methodism came to America. And then especially after the American Revolution and the United States Constitution, the Methodist Church organized very much along those same lines. So the Methodist Church has an executive branch, a legislative branch, and a judicial branch. And that's the broad explanation of it. So the legislative branch at the international level is the General Conference. At our local level, it's the Annual Conference, which is coming up here in June in Corpus Christi. The executive branch of this church is the bishops. At the international level, it's the Council of Bishops. We don't have a single bishop that runs the show. We have the Council of Bishops, which is all of the bishops. At our local level here at the conference, our executive is our bishop, Bishop Schneese in our particular case. There is a judicial. At the large level, there is a Judicial Council made up of half lay, half clergy, who rule on issues. And you say, "Well, what do they rule on?" Well, overarching this entire thing, the United Methodist Church has a constitution. Okay? So all of that comes together to kind of show how this whole thing fits. So our bishops now have a unique role in the guidance of the church, but there's one interesting thing about it. At the Annual Conference or at the General Conference, the bishops don't have a vote. They're there. They actually can't even speak unless the General Conference gives them permission to speak. So they don't have the ability to veto. They don't have any of those kinds of things. So it's an interesting arrangement, but it kind of helps how things are organized. Now, we are an international denomination. Okay? So this gives you a little indication of where we are. Of course, we're familiar over here on the left of the jurisdictions within the United States, but there are jurisdictions all over the world. You can see there's a large jurisdiction going across Europe and Russia. There are several jurisdictions in Africa. By the way, this entire slide projection is... Presentation is online. You can go back and look at this at your leisure. We have it on the church. I'll show you later where you can find it there. But this gives you an idea of what's going on. Here in the United States, we're organized into these various annual conferences, which are then grouped into various jurisdictions. We in the Rio Texas Conference down there, South Central there and the Southern part of Texas are part of this this South Central jurisdiction, which goes all the way up through Nebraska and all of that, and those other various jurisdictions. So this is just some of the ways that we are organized, as we're connectional with a lot of other organizations. Now, why are we here today? How we got here? Since at least 1972, the Methodist Church has been debating, arguing, and wrestling with the issue of same-sex marriage and whether or not we're going to ordain gay and lesbian people. We've been fighting back and forth on that since then. In 1972, there began a series of languages that were entered into our church's discipline, which is the way we do business kind of thing. So we've been debating that ever since. In the 2016 General Conference, which was held in Portland, Maryland, you know, two years ago, three years ago, it came to a head. And a number of factions within the church began fighting over whether or not this language, which excluded gays, lesbians from being ordained or their marriages being recognized within the church, came to a head. And as a result, a number of delegates rose up and said, "Okay, bishops, we have been unable to resolve this question. The argument is still seething in here. We need a way forward." Now, again, as I described at the very beginning, normally, the bishops take no active role in the General Council, in the General Conference, other than to chair sessions, to be the chairman of the session, to guide it. In this case, the General Conference made a call to the bishops, saying, "Please, please, 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 take control here. Give us some guidance." And the bishops then agreed. And they created a commission on the way forward, which was made up of 32 individuals, half lay and half clergy. And they met for, I don't know, was it 17 months or some period of time like that? Then they came back with a plan that they called the One Church Plan. Because the argument was this. There was clearly some congregations, some conferences, some jurisdictions that strongly believed that being homosexual was a sin and should not be sanctioned by the church in any faction. Yet there were others, and particularly in the United States, sizable groups who did not agree with that at all. Yet how could we create an international home that could house all of them? And so they came up with the One Church Plan. The One Church Plan basically allowed for this inclusionary, compatibilist idea that we can all get along together. But if you have local problems, the principal problem being in places like Russia and Africa, where merely being homosexual is illegal and can result in going to jail and in some cases, execution, it would be too much to ask churches in those areas to buy completely into that because, for example, we know in Russia, the state would probably just disband the Methodist Church entirely if that was the case. So we're trying to create this exclusionary thing to allow then churches, congregations, jurisdictions, even conferences to have a little bit more inclusionary rules. Now, along with that One Church Plan, which the majority of the bishops recommended to the General Conference, came along two other plans. One was a traditionalist plan, which took the existing language against homosexuals in the church and doubled down on it and increased the penalties. And then there was another plan called the Connectional Conference, which basically created three parallel churches. One, which was the very traditionalist version. Another one was an extremely liberal, progressive church, which didn't even allow anybody to even talk about anything other than including gays and lesbians. And then a center way, which was more inclusive, allowing the conversation to go on. That Connectional Conference thing never got off the ground. And so by the time it came to General Conference in 2019, which was a special Call General Conference only to solve this one issue. Most General Conferences are attempting to solve lots of issues. But this one was called specially last February in St. Louis to solve this one issue. And so it came down to a vote between the traditionalist plan and this One Church Plan. This was the vote. The One Church Plan failed about 55 to 45 against it. And the traditionalist plan passed by about 53 to 47. So you can see it was a close vote. If you look at the numbers, the actual numbers up there, you can see that we're talking about a few dozen votes difference between the two. And so while clearly the traditionalist plan won the day there, it was by no means a large majority. If a couple of dozen people had changed their votes, the result would have been different. It's that simple. So that's how close it was. But so the traditionalist plan was adopted. What the plan provides for, as adopted, as adopted by the delegates, was it affirmed the current prescriptions against no ordaining of LGBTQ clergy, no officiating or hosting of same-sex marriages, no celebration even of same-sex unions. Homosexuality is, quote, "incompatible with Christian teaching" and defining marriage essentially as a union between one man and one woman, and that was it. So it's doubled down on this. It's reemphasizing these things. It tightens some definitions of, quote, "self-avowed practicing homosexuals." It removes what the conservative part, the traditionalist part, were seeing as loopholes which allowed the church to ordain gay and lesbian pastors. And so they were trying to close down the loopholes on this. Specifically, they went after the Board of Ordained Ministry. Now, the Board of Ordained Ministry is the organization within the church that interviews and decides whether someone who says, "I am called to the ministry," has actually been called. Is that a short description of it, Katie? They kind of help guide that process. So unlike in some denominations, if Don Embry decided that I wanted to be a pastor and felt that I was called in some congregations, that's good enough. But within Methodism, we say, "Wait a minute. Let's have some experienced people discuss this person, talk with this person, and put them through a process. Let's make sure they really are called and they're really into this thing." In this particular case, the rules are saying that the Board of Ordained Ministry has to examine not just the spirituality and the willingness to be called from this, but their sexuality. They have to go into it. And specifically, they have to be pretty intrusive in their examination, doing pretty strong background checks. You know, go in, check their Facebook page, check their Instagram page, check their Twitter feed. Go into the details to find out these things and to, quote, "weed these people out and not allow them in." And then it also set up some rules where restricting bishops from being able to overturn certain trial founding. Yes, we have trials in the church. They're religious trials. And somebody can bring a chargeable offense against one of our clergy if we believe that they've been violating the Constitution, violating the discipline. But bishops do have some means of mitigating or even overturning certain things based on certain things. The rules that were passed in the recent General Conference tightened down on that and limited the ability of bishops to mitigate those things. Some of my observations. And then we'll get into some questions. By the way, you all have a card in front of you. If you have a question, please just write it down. If we have some time, we'll take some Q and A from the audience. But write the question down. And that way, when we get to it, you can, you know, read it off the card. A majority at the conference, however small it was, passed this traditional plan as proposed. And then as proposed, it included a lot of measures that were later ruled unconstitutional and some that may still be ruled unconstitutional. But it was clear the desire of that small majority that these measures be very punitive in their way of managing the church. However, within that, and the reason I showed you that worldwide thing, there were some 840 delegates at that conference. I think 820 some odd of them actually voted at any given moment. Two-thirds of the American delegates favored the One Church Plan. And so it was this, the one-third more traditionalist group here within the United States allying with the Africans, with the Russians, and with the Filipino church delegates that carried the day on that particular one. But I think it's worth noting that of the American churches, at least two-thirds supported the One Church Plan. Again, I remind you, homosexuality is actually is illegal, written illegally in their laws in much of the world today. Not so in the United States. Okay? Now, how did this happen? The politics of it. Yes, there's politics in the church. In this particular case, of those three organizations up there, Good News, Confessing Movement, and the leaders of the Wesleyan Covenant Association organized to close down on the ability for LGBTQ people to participate in the church fully. That was their organization. Their argument is, is they were, quote, "just enforcing the rules." The rules being Scripture, the rules being the discipline. And they felt that the loopholes that were in the system were allowing members of the Methodist Church, largely here in the United States, to flout those rules and that they felt that that was a problem. Essentially, though, the bishops supported the One Church Plan by a sizable majority. And the conference basically said that we don't agree with the bishops. So they told the bishops to go sit down and be quiet. Other things that are going on, though, basically, any congregation, conference, jurisdiction that objects, basically according to these rules, has to sit down and be quiet. And they're not interested in hearing any pushback on that. There's no room for differences on these gay and lesbian issues according to the plan that was passed right now. So there's no room for conversation, is basically what they're saying. Now, there is one other thing going on. The Judicial Council will meet around the first April. And certain measures that were passed that haven't already been ruled on will be ruled on at that time. And some of the measures, and I don't pretend to know all of them, and I've got someone here who can help us think about that. They'll look at that. But whatever comes out approved by the Judicial Council after that will appear in the new discipline, which will be published in one January. And that will be the rules by which we will be living under all of this. Now, do they become immediately effective or is there a waiting period?
January is when they become effective.
Okay, so one January, they go into effect. So all of those things. So it's that quick. Now, what about us? One, this congregation isn't going anywhere. Okay, we're not going to pick up and move. We're not going to, you know, sell off the property. We're not going to do anything like that. We're going to stay right here. We want you to come to church. We want you to be here. We want you to obviously pray for the pastors. Pray for the leadership. Pray for each other, that we discern what we need to do and what this congregation thinks is wise and smart and in line of what's going on. Keep doing our work. As soon as this meeting is over, if you walk right out there, you'll see Vicki with her connectional table out there of things that you can sign up to do. You know, this work of the Lord is still an important thing here. So, but the main thing is, is as options keep coming up and as things are going to happen, we'll keep you informed. Now, I want to bring this back up here. We agreed to this two years ago. Let me give you a couple of minutes to read it through very carefully and slowly. Okay? We talk about open doors, open hearts, open minds, all of the time. We agreed to this. We passed this to Church Council two or three years ago. And this is clearly open and inclusive and all. We're talking about bringing in all people. If you can think of a category that's not up there, that needs to be up there, let us know. I mean, but the idea is that we're not excluding anyone from the life of the church. And we're talking about here into full participation in the life of the faith community. Full participation. That's what we believe. I know most of you in this room. Those of you who I don't know, I need to get to know. The story that I hear from all of us. Those people who consider themselves more traditional, those people who consider themselves more progressive. I know that every single one of you has the love of Christ in your heart and wants to include people, wants to love people. We may have some differences on a few items. I get that. But the point is, is that this congregation wants to be inclusive and doesn't want to hurt anyone. Just recently, some of you may know the details. I won't share the details. One young member of our congregation, who's off at college, a very active member of one of the local Wesleyan Methodist organizations on campus, participating loyally in that and doing good work, recently came out as gay. And the organization ran her off. One of ours. That's hurting one of our members. And I don't think that's what we want. I don't think we want that kind of thing. And so my goal for this congregation is that we figure out how to be as inclusive as possible, but not run people off. Not run people off on the traditional side, not run people off on the more inclusive side, on the progressive side. And that we keep our conversation open on how to solve these things. Now, there's a lot we don't know. We're going to talk about what we do know a little bit more here in a second and what we think. But here's one way that you can stay in touch. All right? We've got a new website. It is live right now. Or if you're smart with the QR codes, you can snap that and it'll take you right there. In fact, this slide presentation is there if you want to go back through it and look at that. The... There's some, the pastor's letter that he just sent out here a while back explaining the pastor's position on all of this, which, by the way, I fully concur with, is there. There are some other useful things that we've talked about. Many of you are familiar with Adam Hamilton. He recently did a town hall at his United Methodist Church of the Resurrection in Leewood and had a very nice long talk. And we've put that video up there so you can kind of get a sense of where some of that may be. Now, I have with me here today a fellow who was at the General Conference. It's one of the voting delegates. So let's welcome Jay Brim right here. He was there. He was one of the voting delegates. He is from our conference. He's one of the delegates from Rio, Texas. There were, what, 10 of you from this conference? Okay. So he's here to help answer questions that you might have. Linda, do we have some cards here?
Just raise your hand.
Yeah, if you've got some more. Okay, the question was, "What happens if the Judicial..." Yeah, it says, "What happens if Judicial Conference..." It's Judicial Council, but nevertheless. "What happens if Judicial Council rules provisions of traditional plan unconstitutional? What next?" Among other things, Jay, Jay's been read in on a lot of the legal stuff here. What do you think?
The traditional plan was actually 17 different petitions. And more than half of those have something unconstitutional in them. They've been ruled unconstitutional twice already, and now they've gone back to the third reading. From, I consider myself a progressive delegate. And from my point of view, it's fortunate that even though the conservative faction controls the vote, they haven't been very good about picking their people to write the petitions. In particular, they haven't figured out how to amend them to make them a constitution. So we're going to end up with most of the worst provisions that they were acting on, like the certification where all of us that are members of Annual Conference have to vote on whether or not we're going to support these provisions of the Book of Discipline, that sort of thing. Those are going to be kicked out. What will be left are a few provisions, like a minimum penalty of one year unpaid for any clergy that performs the same-sex union or marriage. That sort of thing. There, and there will be some provisions that control how it boards the ordained ministry work, including the one Don mentioned about doing the more intrusive examination. They'll just go into effect one by one as they are. But they're not going to be, all it's going to be is just a slight ranking up of exactly what we already have.
Okay. The next question, and if you've got follow-up questions on that, please write them down. Linda will be glad to pick them up. "Will the church dismiss the current LGBT staff and clergy?" Got some thoughts on that?
First of all, the church does exist. Everybody get that? The United Methodist Church is what we call a "jural entity." It's just in our minds. There isn't anything over there that is actually a United Methodist Church. Instead, we've got all these different entities that Don mentioned, the Council of Bishops, Judicial Council, the General Conference, all those different entities. So when we talk about church, we're actually talking about Oak Hill United Methodist or Rio Texas Daniel Conference. Or, in our case, the South Central jurisdiction. Each of those entities can enforce certain rules. But when it comes down to the local level, it's still going to be local churches deciding who they want to hire in terms of who's already ordained as a clergy person in the United Methodist Church who happens to be gay or lesbian or some other version of that and who comes out and says that. It's going to be up to the entity in which they serve to take action against them. That's already out there. For instance, Karen Oliveto, who is the bishop in the Rocky Mountain area in Denver, is openly gay. Has a partner that she's lived with and been in union with 19 years. She was elected as openly a lesbian woman. And the Western jurisdiction has said it's not up to taking action on any person. So if the entity in which that sort of person serves decides it's not taking action, there's not going to be anything that's going to happen to those sort of persons. That is exactly what's driving the passion of the traditionalist plan people is that refusal to force authority in them to vote of discipline about the issues.
Here's a question on that. How did our bishop vote and what did our bishop recommend? Well, one, our bishop did not vote at General Conference. The bishops don't vote. However, I know that Bishop Schneese was absolutely in favor of the One Church Plan. He said that in so many words and I've heard him. So he's been very clear on that. So there's, he's been very clear on that. Anything additional on that?
Yeah, yeah. You should know the bishop's place, it was never the way forward commission. Uh, and in fact, they had a banking to be a part of it because he's such an active teaching bishop across the whole church. We are fortunate to have one of the three or four most respected bishops in the whole church, serving in Rio Texas. He finally agreed to be on the commission, knowing he would spend a lot of time away from what he started doing in Rio Texas and elsewhere. And he was one of the central figures in helping the commission write what it was going to put out. Much of what was put out was with his help and editing and, uh, leading their thinking. Yes, he's very much a proponent of one church plan. He is not in favor of, uh, changing the lives of clergymen around their day of faith in their churches. He's not in favor of the kind of intrusive, uh, investigation. And I'm speaking on this behalf as I'm his chancellor, I'm the lawyer for the bishop in this conference.
This next, there's two questions here, which are basically asking the same question, which gets to kind of the heart and the core of the entire argument. The one is, is homosexuality a sin? And where in the Bible does God condone homosexuality? Remember, Jesus was God in the form of man. That's the core of the argument, right there. And we have people on both sides of that argument. And for, for very intelligent, smart people who have thought about this for years on both sides of that argument, and that's kind of the point that we're here of that there needs to be room for that kind of a conversation in here. There are those in the church who don't want to have that conversation on both sides. Uh, we call those exclusionists or incompatibilists. I want to believe that there's a compatible way of managing both of those views within the same group. But that, that's exactly the, the, the core of the argument. And it seems to be the beginning point for a lot of the division. Any thoughts or comments on that?
Yes, I think it's important for us to talk about that. The Bible does not condone homosexuality anywhere. And there are eight or nine different passages of the New Testament, certainly Paul seeks to several times, that say homosexuality is something that people should not do. One thing that is a struggle for all of us Christians is to read the Bible through and through and understand how it's changed over the years. The Bible, older and over, they condone sex and slavery. And we know that's not right. Uh, we know that was part of the time that those words were in. There are many other instances, especially when you read through the Torah of all the prohibitions, they're, they're no longer, um, observed. But most importantly, for the United Methodist Church, uh, we have, we no longer take the view that women should not be heard speaking in church. We no longer take the view that divorce is, uh, no, it's a sin. There are those words of Jesus against divorce. And these are decisions we've made about our, our lives and our times. And we are, we are interpreting the Bible in our time. And I think that's a challenge for everyone of us to read and struggle with what the words of the Bible are and what they mean.
Um, I'm going to just recommend, there's not time to go into the whole, um, kind of explanation of that question. I do refer you to Adam Hamilton's town hall. It's a little bit over an hour, but he goes into far more depth on that question than we're able to do today. But I will say that the Bible is actually very silent on, on same-sex, um, loving relationships. The, the passages that we do have in the Bible refer to abused relationships. And, and so it is very silent. And so that is, it's part of why we come down, people who read scripture and who dive into it can come down on two different understandings. I will say that the clergy here, all three of us come down on the side, we do not believe that it is a sin. There are also very strong, beautiful Christian people who come down on the side and say that it is. And, and so it is understanding of how we interpret scripture, who do people come down on those sides? Adam Hamilton is in the deep regard a little bit better. I do turn you to that. But it's a very complicated question that is not actually addressed in scripture with two loving people in a relationship where it's not even, it, it's just silent on it. And so we turn to God's God love. And so again, I turn you to Adam Hamilton. Do you want to look into that a little bit?
Next question here is, how did the Rio Texas delegates vote? I think you have a pretty good idea on that.
We voted at a general conference like prior to vices. There are a little, the ones that I would like to watch there. I figured it's not the amount of cases that will affect. But, uh, the screen on it, when we're, when we finish voting, it's hard for us to be sure that the vote we cast is what we intended. It moves back up, it shows. Now, I tried to go around and look at all 10 of our screens. But prior to that, in my conversations with the others, I voted for the one church plan against the traditional plan. There's a lot of reasons I'll be, I didn't discuss with anybody here, I almost forgot about that. So, but I believe we set up our case of a vote of the one church plan against the traditional plan. Based on our conversations, my point of view, and a lot of the times I've dealt with yours.
And then somebody says here, Adam Hamilton's church, which is the United Methodist Church of the Resurrection, if withholding apportionments, will our church consider that? And the short answer now is no. The, um, nothing like that has been discussed. I went, well, no. I mean, the, the question came up, but the answer was no. We will continue to do what we're doing unless something changes. The short answer is, our apportionments go to a lot of things. Our apportionments go to supporting missions around the world. They go to supporting these things and withholding the, uh, withhold, withholding the apportionments, potentially can hurt that. Now, what I know that Adam Hamilton's church is doing, the Church of the Resurrection, is they're not, they're withholding it, but they're not spending it. They're just putting it in escrow and then they'll decide what happens with it next. But no, that's not the plan here. And believe me, if, if, if the church ever got to, I mean, we're thinking about that, you'll be the first to know and it'll be part of the conversation. So we're not, there's nobody making decisions in secret. So, are there other questions out there?
Can I speak to that before you?
Yeah, sure.
Adam's church has not yet made a decision to withhold apportionments. Adam's church pays in genuine, every year. They've already paid the apportionments to the church. What he's still doing is signaling to other big church pastors and to all the small church pastors around the country that they are considering doing this. Obviously, in the two weeks after general conference, it's too soon for us to be making some final decisions about what we're going to do. But what has been happening for 15 years is that those who support the traditional plan have been working steadily for a long time plan that they already had. They included this Wesleyan covenant association, which is a separate place that the churches that want to go, but the traditional plan can move to, out of the United Methodist church. There is no such coalition for those who have a centrist or, or progressive view. So at this moment, there's a lot of conversation going on about, is there going to be something like that? If the United Methodist church is stuck where it is? And friends, in my opinion, after going to six general conferences, we're absolutely stuck where we are. It can't go further to the right. It can't go to the left at all.
The, uh, what will Oak Hill, what is Oak Hill UMC going to do? That's what we're going to decide, okay? The short answer to the question is, we don't know. The longer answer is, it's going to be part of us figuring this out. Now, I'm your church council chair. I'm not a dictator. I, I don't get to just decide how these things happen, and I'm certainly not going to do that. Now, I have heard from many of you directly and some of you indirectly. The pastors have heard from many of you directly and some of you indirectly, and I think that's important. I think the conversation is important. Now, my judgment of this congregation as a whole is that it is largely more progressive on the issue. There is a sizable minority who really feels strongly that the traditionalist plan is the right way to go. But I think there's room for all of us within the conversation now. The general conference is only going to get more traditionalist in its views over time. That's my judgment of how things are going with it. That's what's going to happen with them. The likelihood of the general conference easing up on any of these rules approaches zero, I think. To that point, there is a movement out there to create a, a new Methodist organization that people could affiliate with. It's not non-denominational. It's, it's still Wesleyan, it's still Methodist, but there is that conversation that's out there that I'm hearing, uh, strongly from a number of other areas. So, um, that's what's out there. But the bottom line is, is you're part of the conversation and we all need everybody's opinion. And so if, if you don't think that I know what you think personally, I need to know that. And so do the pastors.
Uh, someone asked, who is Adam Hamilton? Good question, good question. Adam is the senior pastor, as Don said, of the Church of the Resurrection, the United Methodist Church, which is a 16,500-member congregation in Kansas City, uh, just outside of Kansas City. What's important about that is that his Sunday attendance is somewhere near 7,000 members every Sunday on the four campuses of that church. He preaches to the largest group of United Methodist in the world every Sunday. Uh, Adam is a teaching pastor. And for those of you that have used any of his classes, and they're numerous, in your Sunday school, I highly recommend them. My Sunday school class just finished along Paul. There are probably 12, 15 different ones. All have DVDs, about four to six weeks, they're great. But Adam has always been a United Methodist to his toes. He's always had United Methodist church in the, uh, sign books for his church since it began in a funeral home in 1992. And that's why it's called the Church of the Resurrection. He's become a very influential figure throughout the church for his opinions because he's been centrist, uh, in every way about wanting open dialogue about this while believing that, yes, it's appropriate for the church to open itself and be more inclusive. Now, this general conference, for the first time, I saw him truly hanguished to his toes over this. I consider him a personal friend and I will do what I can to support him. He, he believes now that there is no way forward, as Don has said, that the, uh, sticking to the point, this African, uh, delegations from the three central conferences in Africa, they're continuing to grow on their own estimation. And we have no way to audit the membership numbers that they say they have over there. That, that will continue to dominate the conversation there. They expect to have over 40% of votes at the next general conference.
Is Oak Hill United Methodist Church going to amend the welcoming statement? No. The church council, they're not. I guess if the church council brought it up and, and voted to change it, they could. But I've heard no movement to that effect. Yeah, um, he said there may be some concern about being tossed out of the church. This next question kind of gets to that a little bit. It says, "It sounds like nothing has effectively changed despite the passing of the traditionalist plan. Are we likely to hear about LGBT persons being excluded or denied ordination?" There are a couple of our jurisdictions that are effectively already using the one church plan for all practical purposes. The Western jurisdiction and the New England jurisdictions have largely been ignoring those parts for a long time and have been ordaining gay and lesbian pastors for a while. The question is this, that after these effects go, these new things go into effect after one January, will be the, the prospect of church trials? And, um, my guess is, is that there will be a resurgence of these trials of those who think that, that is flouting the rules, will bring trials against those individuals and that we'll be spending a lot of time, energy and money in those aspects. And so, um, somebody here asked me to keep my personal opinion at the door and I've been trying to do that as much as possible. But, um, if, if you're asking my judgment, my judgment is very similar to Jay's, is that there's no room in the traditionalist plan for anybody that has a more centrist, more inclusive attitude about these things. And that, um, you know, I think some folks may be asked to leave. For example, our pastors, if they have a more inclusive attitude right now, they have no plans of marrying any gay people, um, because that's what the rules are. But, um, but in terms of, uh, sitting on a board of ordained ministry and if somebody presents themselves that they honestly believe should be ordained, my guess is that, that, that they're not going to allow that to get in their way. But you'll have to talk to them individually. But if not these people, there are plenty of others. So, um, yeah, I think you will hear about some folks, if, if not actually excluded or denied, um, pushed out. Now, one of the other things that is happening right now is we've got a whole new class of young, um, ordination candidates in the various seminaries. And many of them are, are honestly asking the question, whether they want to keep going, whether they want to be ordained within the United Methodist church or whether they want to go somewhere else. I think we run the risk of losing an entire generation that way. Let me, um, we're getting towards the end here. Let me show you. No, we don't run our theology on public opinion. But let's get a little real about what United Methodists in the United States think about single-sex marriage. Now, what you're looking at up there is, the blue line is all Americans and the dash line is United Methodist. This was a survey that was taken back in 2016, around the time of the presidential election. And what you see is that at the age 20 end of that scale, essentially everybody fully supports single-sex marriage. Obviously, the older you get, the less likely you are. But if you look at that very carefully, notice the 50% line. The 50% line crosses at about age 80. That means that most people under the age of 80 have no problem with single-sex marriage. And I'm not talking about most Americans. I'm talking about most United Methodists in the United States. What that tells me is that there is a shift in the way they see these things. And, and, and I don't know if we're 80, 20 in this congregation, but I'll bet you we're pretty close. Certainly 60, 40. And so we have attitudes along these lines. There's a group of young moms in this church and I'm getting some input from them. And they're saying that they're not real sure they want to raise their kids in a church that is exclusionary and is telling these things. And so I, I think that's something we need to be thinking about and how that happens. I thank you for your time. I'm going to ask a couple of things. Each one of you has your own circle that you communicate with. I want you to talk about this in your circles and spread the information. I'm going to do this again at 10 o'clock here. And I'm happy to- I'm going to do this again at 10 o'clock here, and I'm happy to do this in any venue with any group of people that you want me to do this with. If Jay's available, I know he'll come. If he's not, we'll find somebody else, and we'll do this kind of thing. We want to get the conversation out. I want to eliminate as many rumors as possible, but I want you, everybody, to know the facts, and I want them to know that there is this conversation out there. Second thing, I've mentioned this before, the pastors and I need to know what you think about these things. I don't want it to be a hidden thing. There are many of you out there who I know for a fact strongly favor the traditionalist plan. And I love you, and I want to talk to you about it. And I don't, but I'm glad to talk about it. And I'm not here to tell you that you can't be part of my life, and that's not my goal. And I would sincerely hope that you wouldn't think that I don't belong in your life, because I think that's part of what we are here at Oak Hill. With that, I'd like to close in just a moment of prayer, if you would, if you would join. You want to do that? Dear Lord, this is a tough subject. Many of us already know what we think about this. Please, God, make sure that what we think we know is based on scripture, tradition, reason, experience. Make sure that our hearts are in fact open to talking with everyone in this room, everyone in this congregation, everyone in this community. We know that you are loved, we know that we have work to do, we know that the work that we do has nothing to do with sex, has nothing to do with any of these things. Keep us on the right path to do what you would have us to do. All this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. And thank you. I'll stick around for a few minutes, if anybody wants to just chat, but we'll be starting a new version of this at 10 o'clock.